All of the minutes from February 20, 2025. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next is the chair report. Okay, that ought to be interesting. We began this meeting with the installation of our newest board members Sage Steele, James Bopp, and Brian Eagle. Congratulations to you all, really. Congratulations. And again, on your appointments, I look forward to working with you. You're going to do, I think you'll enjoy this experience. I know you'll bring great experience to the experience, and I am very much looking forward to that. I'd also like to thank you, the members of the board who have departed or are departing. Kathy, it's not death. Don't do that. Don't do that. You make me laugh. Yes, Cindy, thank you so very much. Thank you. You see, we're talking departed, just not a part of, later, we'll do this some other time. Each of them have made a unique contribution to the board, and I'm personally grateful for their work. Jill Burnett came to the board last year and served as the vice chair of the External Relations Committee. As a Kelly School business graduate, she has the past 20 years facilitated Mickey's Camp, a non-for-profit organization founded by the Maurer family. And I know she'll continue serving her community in this and other ways. Donna Spears, a board member since 2018, served as the chair of the Facilities and Auxiliary Committee and as a trustee representative on the boards of IU Foundation, varsity club. She holds three degrees from IU, and I know she'll continue to work as a community leader. Vivian Winston came to the board in 2023, served as the chair of the External Relations Committee, a graduate of, later of the Fittick Whirlpool Distinguished Lecturer of the Kelly School in Bloomington. I know her dedication to IU will continue. Kyle Seibert has been the student member of the Board of Trustees for the past two years and chairs the Student Relations Committee and has earned his bachelor's degree in the O'Neill School in 2023, just received his master's last month, and is on his way to Chicago on the bigger and better things, huh, sir? Okay. Thank you for your service. Thank you very much. Kathy Langham, the chair of the Compensation Committee, Compensation and Academic Affairs Committee. We'll conclude the term of her at the end of the month. As a Kelly graduate and a founder and CEO of Langham Logistics, she's served not only as a strong contributor to this board, but as a shining example of the spirit of entrepreneurism and community service that has trained some Kelly School and IU. Kathy, thank you. Thank you very much. Finally, Cindy Lucchese, who will also conclude her term at the end of the month as vice chair of the Board and as the chair of the Finance and Audit Committee. She has carried out her board responsibilities with dedication and skill. I know that there's a senior executive, I know her, as a senior executive at the Penske Entertainment, a member on several high-profile corporate boards, a proud alum of IU. She will continue to serve Indiana and our university. Thank you so much. Thank you, really. I want to thank Governor Braun for reappointing me to the board of Indiana University, giving me so much, and I'm grateful for the chance to continue my service to IU. Over the four years I've served as chairman, we've been, we've seen some exceptional progress. I don't, I don't take, I got to make sure that you hear this, I don't take pride in necessarily product, progress. I take pride in the fact that I was a part of a team that created that progress. So I want to make sure that that's, that's very, very clear. So this past year is no exception. Students, citizens, a number of people have participated in it. Guided by the three pillars of IU 2030 strategic plan, we approved in April of 23, IU 2023. IU has achieved great things. It's student success an opportunity. We've launched new degree programs in bioscience, microelectronics, computer engineering that will prepare students for jobs that will dominate the decade to come. We have launched partnerships, like the Innovation Co-op with Lilly and Company, to give students the opportunity to receive hands-on training from the state's top employer by bolstering the regional workforce. Through the expansion of the IU Indianapolis Seamless Admissions Initiative, we've made an IU education more easily accessible to students in a growing number of central Indiana schools. And with the recent history-making agreement with the state of Indiana to make sure every Hoosier student earns a degree, the state's toughest high school diploma has a clear path to admissions, we're extending that commitment across the state. Through fundraising, we increased the philanthropy, the philanthropic support for student success and affordability by almost 25%. And the budget we continue today would honor that commitment, keeping tuition in the state flat. When it comes to the world-changing innovation, IU Bloomington is making $75 million investment in new engineering programs and facilities that will attract world-class faculty in key fields. University-wide research expenditures are nearly $1 billion, up 30% from 2001, sorry. And we're growing philanthropic support for our researchers. The new IU Launch Accelerator for Biosciences, known as IU Lab, you like that, by the way, is fueled by the generous $1.38 billion Lilly grant will help make Indiana the hub for innovation and startup activity in the world-changing health and science field. And IU is expanding its direct services to people of Indiana. We now have 10,300 external partnerships with employers and the other entities to address workforce needs in Indiana and beyond. We have grown the number of partnerships with Indiana schools by 18% to more than 1,100 with the assistance of a $16 million Lilly Endowment Grant. IU Bloomington is working to accelerate economic development and job growth in the city's trade district, boosting, I should say, the fortunes of the city. That means so much to so many of us. So this is an exciting time to be at IU, and there's more coming ahead. Next year, we'll open an office in Washington DC facility that will expand the reach of the innovative scholarship and research of our faculty, create new opportunities for our students, major on-campus projects such as the James T. Morris Arena in Indianapolis, the gym. For those of you that don't know, that he, short of Coach Knight, my mother and my father is the most influential person in my life and is the only reason that I'm sitting here and I know it. So I say that, and that may be the third time for you to hear it, but I want to make sure that I honor that. And I can't wait, well, to see the gym. Now, I used to be able to work in the gym, but the uniform is not quite fitting like it used to. Perhaps the best sign of good things to come is the record number of applicants to the flagship campus. Now more than 78,000 students for the coming academic year. That includes 74,000 first-year applicants and a 50% increase from our first-time applicants in 2021. IU is arguably the most important asset, and we are only getting stronger. There are many people working very hard to bring these changes to life, but I'm especially grateful that we have Pam Whitton as our president. No one is more passionate about this university and the positive impact it can make in the lives of our students, the lives of Indiana people and the world. Even as challenges emerge, the future of IU is bright. Thank you, and I will now turn it over to Pamela Whitton.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Buckner. The academic year that recently ended was really one with significant progress, with really lasting impact for our students and for our university and for the state. And many of the initiatives that we launched this year are really going to play a significant role in launching and, I'm sorry, in shaping the future of IU. So I want to just share a few highlights today of what was really a banner year for IU. But I should, to stay upfront, of course, welcome to our new trustees. And I predict that one, two, three years from now, when we speak, of all the wonderful things that you are going to enjoy participating in, in terms of governors over the university, I can promise you that your greatest joy is going to be found in what you see that you're doing for our students. The opportunity to interact with them, but more importantly, to make decisions that impact their ability to not only go to school, but to have an amazing experience while they're in school, will be as rewarding and life-altering for you as anything I predict that you've ever done. And so with that comment in hand, you're going to, I will tell you upfront a pattern so you don't have to figure it out over, in doing board meetings. And that is, when I give my comments, I always start and end with stories about a student because, of course, I always want to remind us about the wonderful individuals that are here. And so with that tradition, I'm going to start my report today with a student highlight. And this time, I'm actually going to tell you about a couple of extraordinary Jacob School of Music students who were part of last fall's premiere of, it was actually a world premiere, of The Amazing Adventures of Cavalier and Clay. Perhaps some of you had read that book in the past, but it was transformed into a new opera that was based on Michael Chabon's Pulitzer Prize-winning novel. And it went on, the students who worked and did the performances here are going on and performing in the national spotlight after having the opportunity to be in Bloomington. So the opera itself was a groundbreaking co-production between the Jacob School of Music and the Metropolitan Opera, and it was really one of the artistic highlights of the year. And that's saying something because on the Bloomington campus, it is, it is an almost infinite list of artistic accomplishments that happen on this campus. So tenor Jonathan Elmore, who is a doctor of music candidate in voice, he portrayed, if you know the story, the FBI agent in the Bloomington production, and he will make his Metropolitan Opera debut this fall in the same role in the New York City production as well. So praised as an intense blossoming tenor, Jonathan is also a 2024 Vocal Fellow at the prestigious Ravinius Dean's Music Institute, and recently performed leading roles with the Northern Lights Music Festival and the IU Opera and Ballet Theater. And so many of you, or some of you, have also heard him singing at the IU commencement and other university ceremonies as well. And so in addition to recent Jacob's graduates, Stephen Warnock, who originated the role of Tracy Bacon, is going to make his Met Opera, Metropolitan Opera, debut this fall in the same role as well. Two other current Jacob students who sang lead roles in the opera, Chancellor Ben and Veronica Cybert, will head to Washington DC this fall to join the prestigious Washington National Opera, Crawford's Young Artist Program for '25 and '26. And the participation of these students, as well as their many peers, in the Cavalier and Clay production really highlights, and I can tell you from experience, having attended that production, the exceptional talent that is nurtured and exists at Indiana University for the students that we have. Their upcoming Met and National Opera performances really are major launching points for their careers, and we look forward to them coming back in future years to Bloomington and mentoring students that are here, who will follow them in their footsteps to New York and other prestigious places as well. So now, let's go back to just a moment, something that our chairman referenced, the surging applications that are happening at IU that I would argue really reflect the perceived value in an Indiana university degree. So more students than ever are actually choosing IU to come to, really driven by our academic excellence and our expanding opportunities and our growing reputation, not only in the state of Indiana, but beyond as well. So university-wide, all of our campuses across IU, we have received 117,908, and if I may, I will round that up to 118,000 undergraduate applications, which is an increase of almost 5% over a year ago. It's an increase of almost 26% over two years ago, and it's an increase, a four-year increase of 44% in terms of applications to Indiana University. And when I started in IU in July of '21, IU Bloomington had 48,900 applications. And as our chairman referenced, for the incoming class that's coming in in the fall of '25, the campus received more than 78,000 applications, which is a 60% increase over a four-year period. The word is out, people, people understand what a great opportunity it is to come to Indiana University. IU Indy received 21,000, more than 21,000 applications, which is an increase of 3% over last year and an increase of almost 7% over the last four years. Our regional campuses, and I'm really particularly pleased to say this because regional campuses nationally have had a real challenge with enrollment, declining enrollment, and it's not just Indiana, it's really every state in the country. They received 18,384 applications, which is a 3.3% increase over the same time last year, and a 40% increase over the applications from four years ago at our regional campuses. And so I love that that little secret's out, don't you, Greg? Damn, who is our UFC representative for our regional campuses as well. So I think that, again, these dramatic increases in applications really demonstrate that people are recognizing the value of an IU degree as well. We are working to ensure student success through innovation and opportunity. So this year, we really made bold strides to enhance student success through cutting-edge tools and programs that are aligned with careers in demand and obviously hands-on learning as well. And so as Chairman Buckner noted, following IU Board of Trustee approval, we launched new degree programs that are aligned with new industries and new professions, including in microelectronics design, nanofabrication, biomedical engineering, biochemistry, the business of music, a fun partnership between our great Kelly School and our Jacob School, digital forensics, and more as well. We implemented new software tools to support student success, and those who attended, I think it was our last board meeting, got exposed to the incredible excitement by Vice President Brenda Stouffer and others at the launch of Stelllic, which is a software platform that is going to enable students to much more easily, frankly, be able to register for classes and plan their curriculum while they're students and track their academic progress. It launched this year on our regional campuses and in Columbus and Fort Wayne, and in Bloomington and Indianapolis, they're going to be joining the Stelllic Club in this coming fall, in '25 as well. We expanded high-impact experiential learning opportunities, including the Kelly Indianapolis Business Co-op Plan that's in place and the Lilly Co-op, which is a partnership between Lilly and Kelly. So we are working to better connect students with career pathways through co-ops and partnerships with big business in Indiana. We also introduced, I think there was a picture of it, I think Ken Owama from our regionals referenced, the Regionals at the Rotunda, which was a new event, I believe it was the brainchild of Ken Owama and his leadership team, which was an event that showcased undergraduate research that goes on at our regional campuses on the, in the rotunda at the Capitol during legislative session. And it was extraordinary, the number of legislators that came down and met with and talked with our students. And the cookies weren't that good, guys. Truly. It was just dramatic interest and excitement, and we were happy to show off to legislators the opportunity for our undergraduates to do research. But of course, more importantly, it was wonderful for our students to be able to talk about the research and be quizzed about it and talk about what they want to do in the future as well. R&amp;D expenditures, research and development expenditures, we are driving groundbreaking research really at unprecedented levels here, solidifying our role as the state's primary research engine. We achieved total R&amp;D expenditures of almost $980 million for fiscal year '24 and are on track to achieve R&amp;D expenditures of $1 billion this year. Pending changes in federal funding levels that we hope don't occur in any significant way that would impact research universities, but certainly this is a powerful measure of the degree to which IU is the state's research powerhouse. And of course, it's not about the resources that are available, it is about the contribution that our researchers are making. And, you know, we do our best to bring stories certainly to all of you, as well as publicly. You got to hear from Richard DiMarkey today, who's phenomenal. We could spend every day of the year, all day, bringing in our faculty who do just extraordinary work that is changing lives as well, and that's evidence of the important mission we have to do research and discovery at Indiana University as well. Part of this is driven by specific initiatives. One example on the Bloomington campus is the Faculty 100 Hiring Initiative, which is a pretty ambitious faculty investment that we're making in IU, at IU Bloomington. And so we are recruiting top-tier scholars to drive discovery and to expand expertise in critical fields and frankly, to really elevate our research enterprise, including the opportunity for our undergraduate and our graduate students to be able to partner with them in research. So out of the 100, and the, we've literally have had thousands of people apply for these positions. We have filled 59 so far with outstanding faculty, and I would again remind you, this is a hiring initiative on top of the faculty hiring that occurs in ways to, you know, fulfill the needs for teaching and research and as faculty turnover, et cetera, at the university. This is on top of that. So of the 59 outstanding faculty, we've brought in people in cybersecurity, microelectronics, applied quantum information science, environmental impacts in health and wellness, aging, geography, biology, chemistry, intelligent systems engineering, informatics, and other critical disciplines as well. So 41 to go. Excited to see who we'll be bringing in. We got a little tease of a presentation about the renovation and construction that's going on. We are particularly focused on renovation and construction of the research space that's necessary at the institution for our faculty to be successful. So we are making bold investments. In one case, supported by an allocation, a generous allocation of $60 million from the Indiana General Assembly during the 2023 biennium. We have now begun construction on a new interdisciplinary research building at IU Indianapolis that's going to improve the research infrastructure, and it's going to foster collaboration for our IU researchers and really create new opportunities for partnerships while attracting top-tier talent as well. We're also launching a $45 million, 90,000-plus-square-foot research lab renovation project in Bloomington on our campus, so necessary. This is going to expand the research capabilities in several existing buildings and enhance our ability to recruit and retain faculty as well. We also dedicated just a few months ago at the School of Medicine, the Medical Education and Research Building, the MURB, NARB. It's a state-of-the-art facility for educating the next generation of physicians and conducting groundbreaking research as well. It is a beautiful facility. It is now officially open with the first class that'll be coming in, med school class coming in in the fall, and I look forward to having the opportunity to show it off to everyone in this room and all over as well. It's very impressive. We've talked a bit about the IU Lab, and isn't it amazing how the Launch Accelerator for Biosciences is coincidentally the acronym IU Lab? Didn't that work out well for us? So we continue to do work in that area, and you guys saw the, and approved the design plans for that building that will start soon. As we talked about, it was made possible truly by a generous $138 million grant from the Lilly Endowment, so important that it's going to really help secure a leading role for IU and more importantly, Indiana in bioscience discovery and commercialization. We have a number of partners external to the university, which is key to the design of this because this is about making Indianapolis and making Indiana the center of the universe in terms of the United States for commercializing bioscience discovery and health. And we serve as the academic anchor through IU Lab as well. Initially, it's going to focus on research and innovation in five critical disease areas relating to diabetes and obesity, neuroscience, rare diseases, cancer, and bone engineering and regenerative medicine as well. Early industry involvement and interest are high. I appreciate your approval of the design, and we're going to get moving on construction, but we decided that we couldn't wait for the building to be done. So work by our very strong leader, David Rosenberg in this field, has begun. We borrowed some swing space over in 16 Tech, and we are literally starting and recruiting researchers and frankly, partners and investors as we speak, moving forward. We announced an IU Health incubator at the IU Lab just within the last probably two or three weeks. This was, this is a $1.5 million annual sponsorship provided by IU Health to sponsor the IU Health incubator at the IU Lab. It is going to focus on therapeutics, devices, and diagnostics, all with AI, excuse me, and tech innovation as the through line. The incubator is going to do pre-accelerator and accelerator programs to help startups grow into major companies. The pre-accelerator program is going to cater to those founders who may not yet have a company established but have one heck of an idea and are building toward having a product to show potential investors and customers. And then the other side of this, the accelerator program is going to cater to startups that have a product ready to show. And these startups are going to have generated initial market traction, be ready to scale, and then prepare, will help them prepare and help them with the fundraising rounds as well. And so we're running, we're running with the IU Lab already as well. In regard to Indiana University's service to the state, which is such an important value for us, we're taking bold, targeted action to really meet critical needs across the state, strengthening the healthcare workforce, fueling innovation, and of course, driving regional economic development as well around the state. So for example, to help address our critical nursing shortage, IU Indianapolis exceeded its goal of increasing undergraduate nursing enrollment by 50%. It was, we were supposed to reach this goal by 2025. We actually reached the goal in 2024 with a 76% increase over baseline, supported by a $16 million grant from IU Health. We expanded IU Innovates, which is our university-wide platform. It's about 18 months old, led by the very, very talented Julie Heath. It's a platform for entrepreneurship. We have doubled its space in Bloomington. We have now launched programming at IU Northwest with planned expansion to IU Indianapolis to support innovation and startup activity across the state. It's really, it's been wonderful, and we have even been surprised at the demand from students, which I think bodes well for the future economy of our state as well. And then as mentioned, through a $16 million Lilly Endowment Grant, IU Bloomington and community partners in Bloomington are revitalizing the city's trade district, really working to transform it into a hub of innovation, economic development, and civic engagement. We really want to be a strong partner for Bloomington to lift up our wonderful city here as well. IU Indianapolis, I think we take it for granted sometimes because it was such a wonderful accomplishment. I would remind everyone, it's really only 11 months old. As a freestanding university, so proud of the campus for achieving R1, Research 1 status, a phenomenal accomplishment, making IU one of the few institutions in the United States that can boast multiple R1 campuses. And frankly, we have four R1 universities in the state of Indiana. We have our esteemed colleagues in West Lafayette with a very good school, that's an R1. Notre Dame in South Bend is an R1. But now we have an R1 in Bloomington, and we have an R1 at Indianapolis as well. And most importantly, the city of Indianapolis deserved its own freestanding, top-level research institution. Strong urban centers have strong research institutions, and now we serve that role for the city of Indianapolis as well. Regional campuses continue to have amazing milestones. Really, I can't express enough how wonderful it is, and I have the chance to visit them multiple times a year. IU Bloomington, of course, is arguably the most beautiful college campus in the country. But I would say, if you visit IU Indy in terms of metro campus, it stands out, and our regional campuses are extraordinarily beautiful as well. And they continue to serve as, really, as vital engines of progress that expand access to education. They serve such an important role in strengthening local economies and really deepening our university's impact across regions around the state of Indiana. So just a couple of milestones. IU Southeast launched a new medical laboratory science degree program. I had the good fortune to go down with them and kick that off. They did it in partnership with three Louisville-based hospital systems. Remember, they're right on the border with Kentucky. It was, it was kind of fun because I will tell you that they were pursued and invited from the Kentucky side to launch this program, to provide Kentucky with the trained folks in this area. And I will let you all draw your conclusions from that as well. Yes, we are playing the University of Kentucky basketball this year as well. And this is an important step to address workforce needs and really expand healthcare education in that region as well. IU South Bend hosted the 2024 University Economic Development Association Summit, where they had people come from all over the country, bringing in national experts to explore how higher ed can drive economic and community development as well. IU East deepened its collaboration with the city of Richmond through new partnerships that enhance community engagement and service. IU Northwest celebrated the opening of a new space for its Center for Urban and Regional Excellence, expanding its capacity to serve the region as well. And IU Kokomo, they're the old folks in the room. They celebrated their 80th anniversary, celebrating decades of educational leadership and community impact in North Central Indiana. It was a lot of fun to go have that birthday party for their 80th anniversary as well. We have extraordinary faculty on this campus, across all of our campuses. We will continue to support them, and I know that you will all do all that you can to support them and enable them to be successful in the work that they do. I love to take advantage of the opportunity to highlight our faculty, and I'll take just one for the interest of time and do so. Distinguished Professor of Biology Roger Ennis was recently elected to the National Academy of Sciences, which is a quite prestigious recognition of his contribution to his field. And it was a recognition of his distinguished achievements in original research on how plants recognize and respond to pathogens. So National Academy of Sciences membership represents one of the most distinguished honors there is in the U.S. for U.S. scientists and engineers. And Professor Ennis and his team, and I'm sure he would be the first to acknowledge the team that worked with him on this, explore how plants use exosomes, which are tiny vesicles enriched with defense proteins and microRNAs for intercellular and enriched with defense proteins and microRNAs for intercellular and potentially enable us to interconnect communication during immune responses, right? So these insights are paving the way for innovative strategies to engineer disease resistance in crops like soybeans with broad implications for global agriculture and frankly, for food security throughout the entire world. And so we celebrate Professor Ennis's election to the NAS as a testament to the impact and excellence of his research, and of course, representative of the impact of the research of so many faculty across all of our campuses at IU as well. And of course, the biggest highlight, the Super Bowl at Indiana University, happens every May when we celebrate commencement. And it did not disappoint this year. We're so privileged. I always, I always tell folks that it's so wonderful to be able to share one of the best days in someone's life, right? The day they graduate. It's like, it's like getting invited to, you know, somebody's wedding and the birth of their first baby and their graduation. We just get graduation and we'll take it. And it's, it's such a joyful day, and it's such an honor to be able to spend time with our students as they graduate. So the Bloomington Class of 2025 awarded 11,019 degrees to 10,684 students, and it was the largest graduating class in the history of the Bloomington campus. At the IU Bloomington Graduate Commencement Ceremony, we awarded an honorary IU Doctorate to alumna Harriet Newman Alivi, a successful Broadway and film producer. She was the producer of the show Stomp, if you've heard of that before on Broadway. This was the second year that IU Bloomington held its undergraduate commencement ceremony in the evening. So we make it a tradition now. We've done it two times. In an innovation that is quickly becoming a beloved new tradition, the evening setting has really proven to be extraordinarily successful, you know, elevating the ceremony frankly to new heights of joy and energy and community spirit. You know, we, the experience is capped off frankly by fireworks display that really lights up the Bloomington sky, an unforgettable finale that leaves a lasting impression on graduates and their, and their families. And truly, our graduates are dancing in the aisles at the end of graduation, which is exactly what they should be doing as well. IU Indianapolis has been conferring degrees here, I'm sorry, in Indianapolis for 56 years, but this was the first commencement ceremony that was just for IU Indianapolis. And even though when it was I U P U I, we enjoyed having our colleagues there, I did not miss listening to the Purdue alma mater at the end of the graduation as well. So of course, celebrating with our graduates on all our campuses is, is the most significant highlight of the year almost always. And so as I began my report by highlighting an outstanding performer at the Jacob School, I'm going to conclude my report by featuring another extraordinary student. So Alex Kaluzna is a junior in the IU Luddy School of Informatics, Computing, and Engineering, and he is the co-founder of CapShock, which is a startup that's reimagining concussion detection in sports. And so CapShock's patent-pending dicapsule technology offers a mechanical alternative to traditional $300 electronic mouthguard. So this is a mouthguard, right, for athletes. So it's, it makes the athlete's safety more affordable and accessible across all levels of play as well. And so what sets Alex apart is not just his innovation, but his, frankly, his commitment to IU's entrepreneurial community. And so Alex was part of a dynamic 80-member IU delegation of students, faculty, and staff who represented IU Innovates, which I referenced just a few minutes ago in my remarks, at last week's Global Entrepreneurial Entrepreneurship Congress. This was just the second time the event was held in the U.S., in the U. L. City, in its 16-year history, putting Indianapolis in a, really an exclusive club and making downtown the international entrepreneurship capital of the world for a few days last week as well. So I had the opportunity during the Congress to actually join in a fireside chat with Professor Ted Zeller, who is a nationally recognized expert in entrepreneurial ecosystems, where we highlighted the power of collaboration and student-driven innovation. And I had the chance to, to meet Alex and to see his mouthguard demonstrated as well. Great student, great young man, exemplifies that spirit, you know, building CapShock while, you know, actively contributing to a culture where student entrepreneurs push each other to grow, they share knowledge, and they celebrate each other's success together as well. So his journey really is a very powerful reminder of the impact our students can have when they are supported by a strong entrepreneurial ecosystem that we now have in place through IU Innovates. And so we are excited to see how Alex continues to scale CapShock and inspire innovation at Indiana University and beyond. And with that, Chairman Buckman, I return the floor to you.
Thank you. The piece that Alex had, I happened to see it on TV. If you've ever been involved in, in any kind of sports, when you get jolted in your head, one of the first things you do is clench your teeth. And it's the ability through that mouthpiece to determine how much pressure you've actually put there, to determine whether you in fact should be evaluated at an earlier stage for a concussion. And most of those who have participated, even as a young person, even you haven't been in, fully in team sports shifts on the street, all of us have done that. So I think it's terrific because I, I've worried about it, you know, some with me to a lesser degree, but with young people today. But you know, to have a young man come up with that, that's pretty good. So thank you for that. Next here, we'll have a report from the University Faculty Council Representatives, and if you'll come up, share your name and your thoughts, we would sure appreciate it. Were you locked out over there? Locked out? Oh no, I can't get in. Oh, I can't get out.
Oh, look, there you go.
Just move the whole thing. All right, I don't, I don't determine order. You know, I, I know what I would do, but you guys do what you want to do.
Good afternoon. My name is Greg Dam, and I'm an Associate Professor of Psychology at the Indiana University East Campus. I also have the honor of serving as the co-chair of the University Faculty Council, representing just over 1,000 faculty members at our five regional campuses. To our three newly-appointed trustees, welcome, and thank you for stepping into this stewardship The Indiana University regional campuses collectively enroll more than 24,000 students, three-quarters of whom are first-generation students or from low-income households. Our mission is clear and compelling: to foster social mobility and to drive economic growth in our communities. Faculty across our campuses are deeply committed to this mission, driven by the goal of transforming student lives and advancing regional economic growth. Today, I would like to share with you the development of a new innovative and timely faculty-led initiative. It is the development of a 90-credit, excuse me, Bachelor of Professional Studies, the BPS degree, a collaborative online program involving all five regional campuses. This initiative is in response to the recent guidelines from the Higher Learning Commission, the HLC, our accrediting body, which now allows for the creation of carefully constructed, reduced-credit degree, bachelor's degrees. This change acknowledges the realities that many students face today, particularly working adults who have accumulated college credit but do not have a degree. The BPS degree is currently being designed with these students in mind. Approximately 770,000 Indiana adults have earned some college credit but no completed degree. By reducing credit requirements from 120 to 90, we not only lower the financial barriers but significantly accelerate time to completion, and therefore accelerating the workforce development across our regions. The BPS degree will maintain rigorous academic standards in curriculum design and assessment while offering a reduced-credit-hour degree. Our faculty developers are carefully crafting the program learning outcomes with the nationally-recognized NACE career readiness competencies to ensure that our graduates emerge workforce-ready. The BPS initiative also exemplifies the role of robust faculty governance at Indiana University regional campuses. Faculty governance is an integral, is integral to maintaining the academic integrity and relevance of our curricula. From the initial concept to the formal curriculum, curriculum development, faculty governance ensures academic rigor and alignment with our mission. This is especially evident in collaborative online degrees, where faculty committees across different campuses actively engage in curriculum oversight, innovation, and continuous assessment to uphold the highest educational standards. Our ability to effectively work together demonstrates our collective commitment to our institution's mission and to those that we serve. We look forward, forward to your continued support and partnership in bringing this transformative educational opportunity to our students and our communities. As we look ahead, I also want to share concerns that weigh on many of our colleagues. Our regional campus, campus faculty are energized and actively working to advance new initiatives like the Bachelors of Professional Studies. But at the same time, many are feeling uncertainty about the future of our campuses. Faculty care deeply about student success, and many are concerned about how financial constraints might affect our ability to deliver those commitments. We stand ready to be partners in shaping solutions that protect our core values and ensure that the Indiana University regional campuses continue to serve as engines of opportunity and innovation in our regions. Together, we can turn the budget challenges into the opportunity to reimagine how the IU regional campuses power social mobility across Indiana. Thank you for your service and for your continued support.
Well, as always, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. A warm welcome to our new trustees. I thank you for your service and also for the ones who are...
I'm a student.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I actually, that's next, but I'll, I'll jump right into it.
Thought that we would do that.
Yeah, I couldn't help it. I just had to thank people. The first time I spoke at this table was exactly three years ago. Freshly elected as President of the Indianapolis Faculty Council and co-chair of the Indiana University Faculty Council, I took the time that day to introduce myself, but it occurred to me this week that only three of you were sitting in these seats then. So I'm going to take 30 seconds to tell you that I'm a first-generation college student. My name is Philip Goff. I'm the fifth of six sons of parents who knew the path to success was education. Three of us went on to earn doctoral degrees. I was proud to join IU in 2000 after seven years in Los Angeles. As I said, I'm a chancellor's professor of history, and my field is American religious history, and I direct the Center for the Study of Religion and American Culture. I've been a proud IU faculty member since arriving here, dedicating my life to research, teaching, and service, like over 8,000 full-time faculty across IU. I'll admit that my most challenging and fulfilling days have been over these past three years, but it has been worth it. Watching IU Indianapolis take shape, vary it deliberately, has been a wonder. I was an early believer. Proof of that is in the license plate I got two years ago. I'm grateful to the Board of Trustees and President Witten for recognizing the potential and the untapped opportunities of IU's presence in Indy. We are building on a firm foundation, which is evidenced by our reaching Research One status in the past year, a real testament to the dedication of our faculty and staff. We are deeply embedded in the community, the region, and the state, with most of our students coming from Indiana and staying here after they graduate. We have had for decades what Purdue longs for: internships throughout the city and businesses of all sorts, nonprofits and government. Presently, we are looking carefully at how to build on that foundation and recent success to take our campus to the next level. IU has lots to be proud of in Indy, but we know we are only getting started. How have we done it? First, again, kudos to President Witten and the board for having faith in us and working with us. Faculty have worked incredibly hard over the past three years, and I am grateful to them. We have always been something of a cross between Bloomington, a research campus, and the regionals, which are deeply tied to their local communities. That is precisely the career I've wanted because I know the power of education to shape individuals and communities. Part of the firm foundation we are building on and why I believe IUND is achieving increasing success quickly is how we lean into shared governance. We always have. Greg talked about faculty governance, how faculty recognize their responsibilities and regulate their work within the university through faculty governance. But that's only part of the story. Faculty governance is one-third of the broad shared governance of the university. When many of IU's policies were written in the early 1970s, including the Constitution of the Faculty, we all worked within the framework of the Joint 1966 Statement of the National Organizations for Trustees, for administrators, and for faculty. It made clear the role of each part of shared governance: the Board of Trustees and making sure the institution stays true to its mission, playing a major role in ensuring that the institution has the financial resources to operate successfully, possessing final decision-making authority, of course, and entrusting the conduct of the administration. The president as the chief executive officer, ensuring that the operation of the institution conforms to the policies set forth by the governing board and sound academic practice, providing institutional leadership, making sure there is effective communication between components of the university and representing the university to the public. And the faculty and having primary responsibility for such fundamental areas as curriculum, subject matter, and methods of instruction, research faculty, research faculty status, and those aspects of student life related to the educational process. Shared governance then refers to a system that relies on faculty playing an integral role in the university, not just research or teaching or service, but how the place runs as well. We are, after all, the ones closest to the academic enterprise, which is our core mission. This has been the history and tradition of Indiana University for many decades and has been the bedrock of our shared success. I'll be the first to admit that faculty can sometimes drift outside their lane and think they have authority to make decisions that they do not rightfully have. And I've spent years trying to get them to read the manual of shared governance, how our policies are set up, and stick to academics and thinking about our role. We've all, especially faculty, made great strides of late in achieving a better equilibrium of sticking with and being more responsive, responsible to our individual roles and shared governance. The creation of the new UA08, the Policy on Policies, in the February meeting is a perfect example of faculty, administration, and trustees working together. And now comes the recent vague language in the budget bill that faculty governance activities are advisory-only. What does that mean? Of course, in a sense, faculty governance has always only been advisory because the power is vested by the state and you, the Board of Trustees. You then delegate authority variously to the administration and faculty. For instance, faculty cannot just create programs willy-nilly. They must create programs that then come before you, and you determine whether they move on. It is the strong opinion of many that UA08 already recognizes the faculty's advisory role in policy before the changes that were made earlier today. By making the Policy Executive Committee the body that actually creates policy, the items passed by the UFC are already advisory. Faculty policies must come before the PEC at least twice and cannot be policy until the PEC directly votes them as such. Having the UFC as the responsible office is not a faculty activity, as the statute calls it. I've shared this assessment behind the scenes with the administration. When we met with the Academic Affairs and University Policy Committee in the fall, we asked you what you as trustees would like to hear in our reports, and you told us that we should bring to these meetings what we think you as trustees need to hear. The changes made today will surprise, frustrate, and in many cases, anger faculty who have followed the rules of shared governance, including creating that policy on policies that solidified the UFC's advisory role. Making these changes without consulting, ironically, without the advice of the very people these changes will affect, will feed the narrative among some, many faculty that they play no formal part at all in the university. I've also shared that concern many behind the scenes. For many, today's changes beg the question: what is the role of the UFC at all? Is if, as those actually doing the research and teaching of classes, the UFC cannot play a formal advisory role in the creation and maintenance of policies as the responsible office, what will it do? After all, if the UFC cannot be a responsible office, even the Constitution of the Faculty of Indiana University will no longer be under its own purview. While that policy needs revisions, definitely in light of the recent statutes, if faculty are not formally involved in proposing and maintaining its revisions, the UFC is empty, and faculty know that. I will, of course, of course, you know me, I will, of course, work with you and the administration always to the best of my ability in the coming days, given these changes. I will always practice what I preach about being agreeable even when we disagree, and I will encourage my colleagues to do the same. I will encourage my colleagues to do the same. But I would be remiss in my duties to you and to those who elected me to this position if I did not share with you the pushback that we're likely going to see. Again, thank you for the opportunity to share the successes and concerns of faculty. I truly do appreciate it, and I look forward to one final lap of working with you next year. And on that note, I'm going to thank my co-chairs. Every year I get two new co-chairs, and you don't know them when the year starts, and by the end of the year, they're your closest friends. And we have done a lot of good work. Thank you, President, for bringing us in and trusting us in a number of matters. I think we've made a great team.
Great.
So we had a plan in our order.
Got it.
So good afternoon. I'm last, so here we go. So my name is Danielle Deeswell, and I am clinical professor in the School of Education for Higher Education and Student Affairs, and I run our Higher Education and Student Affairs Master's Program, as well as coordinate our undergraduate initiatives with that program. So I would like to begin today by offering a public welcome to Chancellor David Rheingold. We are off and running in his second week. He's not counting, but we are, because we keep going in and asking for things. And I look forward to working with him as we navigate bringing the chancellor role back to campus. Building off my amazing colleagues' comments, and as I have shared at the UFC and the BFC, I do not believe that faculty governance... I'm also the sentimental one, which makes me most likely to be emotional, but I brought my own tissues this time. Faculty governance is dying at Indiana University. Now, what is happening is that higher education is in the midst of a paradigm shift that is transforming how faculty engage in shared governance. While we have mentioned multiple times over the past year that we have been facing strong headwinds in higher education, I would argue that we have now moved into a space where higher education and Indiana University are truly experiencing a paradigm shift. The faculty are experiencing more than just an adjustment. We are experiencing transformational change that has an impact on our day-to-day work and how we understand the role of our voice in the function of the institution. These shifts understandably create anxiety and questions for all members of the campus community: faculty, staff, and students. Throughout the year, I have tried to stress the importance of the need for the faculty to develop and care for our relationship with the administration. It is no secret that faculty have a lot of opinions about a number of things. But what we also know to be true is that any new initiative or solution to a problem has not ever been solved on the floor of any one of our councils in 10 to 20 minutes. Rather, what is brought to the faculty governance bodies is the collaborative work of faculty and administrators who haven't intentionally gathered to think through options and present to the body a proposal or a solution to a problem. And the work of these committees, task forces, and work groups are where the work of shared governance is strongest. Our faculty governance bodies serve as a venue for sharing that work transparently with our communities. We, as faculty, have responsibility to be thoughtful and intentional in how we choose to engage in our role in shared governance. Two things can be true as we experience this paradigm shift in how faculty understand the role of their voice in the operation of the institution. First, it is appropriate to grieve what is changing in how we have understood how our voice is valued, recognizing that something has been lost. And, second, the only people who can take away the ability for the faculty to engage in the process are the faculty themselves. And what I mean by that is while a policy or a statute may define our role as, well, let's just say advisory, only the faculty themselves can relinquish their responsibility to engage in the process. As the AAUP Statement on Government of Colleges and Universities notes, governance is, quote, "a joint effort." The joint effort is one that requires collaboration with the current administration. Some faculty have expressed a viewpoint that walking away from our role in faculty governance because we might dislike who serves in our administration or oppose a new policy or statute will result in a stronger stance from the faculty. All that will happen when faculty cease to engage with the administration will be decisions that do not include faculty voices. And while the institution will, with no doubt, continue to function, the strength of that campus will be diminished without the faculty voice. Over the past year, I have many examples of faculty who have engaged in meaningful joint work with administration to develop academic programs, establish policies, amend policies, and come together to talk about how to proceed around difficult issues. A large number of faculty want to engage in meaningful work that produces an end outcome that advances Indiana University. Those include how we have developed procedures and policies to comply with SEA 202, creating new academic programs, amending those existing policies to improve faculty and student experiences, reviewing what it means to have a general education curriculum, and identifying structures to make our campus more student-transfer-friendly, just to name a few. What is most important to understand about any of the examples is that they are never done in isolation. They are done with and together the administration. This is necessary to understand both the impact of an action and how to ensure that we have the capacity to actually do what is being asked of the institution. It has to be done together. Next, we have to enter the space in good faith. One of my... One of my earliest conversations with President Witten was about entering spaces in good That has stuck with me, and as I shared with the UFC, that is something that I have observed consistently in my interactions with her. Additionally, that same understanding has been present...
It helps, trust me.
Yeah, let's do that.
Thank you, too.
Additionally, the same understanding has been present in all the spaces I've entered with Trustee Langham, as we have worked together regarding the academic affairs pieces that required BOT engagement. Thank you, Trustee Langham, for providing the space and dialogue over the past year. It is important to note that these spaces are not just for sharing what will happen with faculty, but rather also thinking about how we might identify multiple solutions and then parse out the pros and cons of each of those options to determine which one might be the best choice at a given point. Higher education and IUB have only become more complex. Our institutions operate 365 days a year, not only in the fall and spring semester. While the fall and spring are always filled with the typical cadence of classes and meetings, the summer term has seen increases in the number of courses offered. Our campuses are busy with orientation and advising of beginner students and transfer students. Our work to support students and advance the campus happened throughout the entire year. As we think about the future, I'll offer the following quote... You didn't think we were going to get through one of these without a quote from a book. Brian Rosenberg, in his book, Whatever It Is, I'm Against It: Resistance to Change in Higher Education, notes, quote, "While the barriers to change will not go away anytime soon, they are difficult but not impossible to overcome. With the right confluence of circumstances, brave and creative leadership within the administration and the faculty, external pressures that demand a response and good ideas, it is feasible to imagine a college or university that offers to the world an education that is more affordable, more student-centered, and more holistic," end quote. As I transition out of this rule, I am confident that Dr. Bill Ramos will be committed to continuing to engage in building and caring for the relationship with the administration. He will do it in his way, probably with some less emotion than me, and he will have my support in that process. Finally, when you care for the relationships in these processes, those relationships often then tend to have meaning to the individuals involved. While I have a number of people that I would like to thank, there are two specifically that I would like to acknowledge publicly today. To Provost Raul Shervostov. I want to publicly acknowledge the work that Provost Shervostov has done over this past year to advance Indiana University Bloomington. He has been accessible and more than willing to share time with the BFC Executive Committee as we have navigated several difficult issues. What I have found over the course of the year is that he is consistently a human that enters a space willing to listen, firm on what is and isn't possible in today's higher education environment, honest about the implications and consequences of decisions, holds firm to his decisions, and, in my opinion, is absolutely one of the kindest and supportive humans on this campus. I know that the Executive Committee and myself are more than appreciative for his insight and wisdom during these difficult times. President Witten, this is not an easy time to lead in higher education. You tirelessly, tirelessly lead this institution, and I want to publicly thank you for your partnership, support, and guidance over the past year. You have a commitment to shared governance, and that shows up in how you intentionally and regularly create working groups to provide ideas and proposals about how to address challenges that are facing the institution. You advocate at the state level for all faculty and work to elevate our colleagues' work throughout Indiana and globally. You are one of the hardest-working people I know and never take your eye off getting to the goal, and that shows up in the multiple ways that you've advanced the institution. And you always make time for a conversation and are willing to work through options to address a problem. And for the record, I do believe that, as an institution, we are in a better place today than we were a year ago. While we are in the midst of a paradigm shift, what I have experienced is a commitment from President Witten to continue to advance this institution through strengthening our position in the state and globally. She has listened and engaged with faculty regularly throughout the year and has been honest about what we need to do to address changes at this institution. As I conclude my term, I do have an ask, that is, that we all agree to continue to enter spaces in good faith. While it sounds simple, it actually takes a lot of work to be willing to listen to each other and for all parties to accept a final decision whether we 100% agree or not with each other. Indiana University is well-positioned to navigate both the changes that we want and navigate those that will be forced upon us from external entities. Thank you for the privilege.
Well done. Thank you for your report. Does anyone have any questions for any of our faculty reps? Please.
I would be really interested in talking to you all further about how we can work together. I'm, of course, brand-new to this board, and I know that, coming into this board meeting, that, you know, we had some really serious deadlines that we had to meet. You know, one was a budget. We have to have a budget July 1, right? Or everybody goes home or looks for another job. And then the other challenge was, you know, what, how many policies that we adopted in a very compressed period of time, from the legislation being passed to they had to be effective July 1. Now, what was missing and what... I talked about our General Counsel in the expressive activities policy, how he publicly vetted that, and then, you know, the beneficial results of that. I mean, I would really like to see the trustees be more... I mean, the proposals that came to the trustees should be made public so that people can look at them, comment, be engaged, and then we would have... And then have a committee system that would consider those and then be able to meet, have comments, have interaction, and I think the product would be better. Now, obviously, there's emergencies, which we faced right here, right? Right here and right now, okay? But when we don't, when there is time to do things, I mean, I'm a little surprised that, you know, not the case, frankly, and I think the results would be much better. And so I appreciate... You two both addressed that, I thought, in maybe different ways, but, you know, I would like to see that. Would that be helpful?
First, thank you for that. I made reference to the new policy on policies, that's UA-08, we passed just back in February, I think, and it does call for that, in fact, and it standardizes how everything needs to be made policy. There's a separate committee, and it's got administrators and faculty on there as well, and it's working very well. In this case, it was just had to be so expedited that faculty are going to be called off-guard by this, and it's going to be my job to try to explain it, but it's going to be difficult. Yeah. But UA-08, if you look at it later, you'll see, it's really... It lays it out very well. Again, this is one of the things that the President had us involved in, and I think we did really good work in this and work with Trustee Langham on this, and I think it will be good for Indiana University going forward. It includes a public period, by the way, a public review period, but...
This is UA-08?
UA-08, yes.
You know, I had enough difficulty reading 533 pages.
I know.
So I haven't gone back to, you know, previous... Well, I'm very encouraged by that. So you all think that'll be a helpful process going forward?
So I would add that I think that not only is that a helpful process, but I think thinking through structures where it is transparent and predictable about where engagement happens is what makes sense. I think one of the things when I, you know, when I talk about that this is transforming how faculty engage in shared governance, when I did my first comments in September, one of the things I talked about is that what we see in higher education right now is more of a division between what is considered to be governance on the campus. And so it is, you know, the faculty have these things and the administrators have these things, and never shall the two really interact. And so now we are at a point in higher education where that paradigm shift is that it all has to interact. In order for the academy to thrive, we have to work together. And so that transformational shift now means, how do we create our structures and our systems that are predictable and transparent for how it is that people can expect to engage in those processes?
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Any more comments? Thank you, I appreciate that. The next item on the agenda is committee action items. Approval is requested for all action items recommended by the standing committees per the appendix to the agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved in second. Are there any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a conflict of interest. We don't have any this meeting, I don't think, okay? Moving on to awarding of degrees, approval is requested for awarding of degrees as of February 28, March 31, April 30, May 31, 2025. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
So moved in second. Are there any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Do any trustees have any old business to bring forward? Hearing none. We go to see if there's any new business. The first item is two approvals related to IU Health. Will Vice President and General Counsel Tony Prather please join us to present this to
Indiana University and IU Health are partners to a fund-
Indiana University and IU Health are partners to a funds flow agreement through which IU Health provides funding to support, among other things, the core academic activities of the School of Medicine. President Witten, Chair Buckner, and the School of Medicine Dean Hess are members of the IU Health Board of Directors. Board Chair Buckner, in his role as a member of the nominating committee and on behalf of the IU, nominated and supported the reelection of James Devlin and Kyle Glazer as at-large directors on the Board of Directors for IU Health effective July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2029. In accordance with the funds flow agreement, the Board has to approve the reappointments of James Devlin and Kyle Glazer, and it is my recommendation that the Board approve the reelection of both and also approve the compensation policy for IU Health Board of Directors.
Is there a motion for approval? Hearing a motion and a second. Are there any final comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Thank you very much. Let's see, you got the compensation as well as that. The second is two approvals relating to the indemnification, Tony, so would you please?
Yes, thank you.
Lay that out.
So the Board of Trustees Indemnification Resolution allows for the indemnification of any person against whom an action is brought or threatened by reason that such person is or was a trustee, officer, agent, or employee of Indiana University, or serving at the request of Indiana University as a trustee, director, officer, agent, or employee of any corporation, partnership, trust, or other entity or enterprise, and that person meets the criteria set forth in the indemnification resolution to be deemed an indemnified person. Last December, Counsel for Dr. Bram, Dr. Bradford Bamba Sr. sought indemnification for Dr. Bamba in accordance with the indemnification resolution for legal fees incurred by Dr. Bamba as a result of the lawsuit brought against Indiana University by former members of the basketball team. At that time, there were not enough facts for determination with respect to whether or not Dr. Bamba met that criteria. This past April, the Jones Day Law Firm completed its investigation into the allegations set forth in the lawsuit. In its investigative report, it included the following findings: no witness interview, player account, documentation, or other evidence regarding any general predilection of Dr. Bamba that indicated that he had any sexual purpose or devised sexual gratification from administering digital rectal exams. Whether the evidence suggests that he included those exams among the examinations he felt necessary in completing comprehensive physical examinations of Indiana University basketball players. Based upon the medical expert opinions, it was not clearly unreasonable for Dr. Bamba to include those exams in the physicals he performed for the men's basketball team, and notable that all of the experts agreed that Dr. Bamba's method of performing those exams was appropriate. As a result of Jones Day's investigative findings, I have determined that Dr. Bamba meets the criteria to be deemed an indemnified person in accordance with the indemnification resolution, and it is my recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve his designation as an indemnified person and that he be indemnified in accordance with the Board's indemnification resolution.
You pass your, you pass along your recommendation. Is there a motion for approval? First and a second. Are there any comments? All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Next is Benjamin Hunter. Last year, the ACLU filed a lawsuit alleging that the actions of arresting certain of its clients and banning them from a public forum and issuing no trespass orders. The original complaint sued President Witten in her individual capacity, and the Board subsequently deemed her an indemnified person in accordance with the indemnification resolution. Earlier this year, the ACLU amended the lawsuit and amended the complaint and added Benjamin Hunter, Associate Vice President and Superintendent of Public Safety, as a defendant, suing him also in his individual capacity. As a result of both the pleadings and discovery that has taken place since Mr. Hunter was added as a defendant, I have determined that Mr. Hunter meets the criteria to be deemed an indemnified person in accordance with the Board of Trustees' indemnification resolution, and it is my recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve his designation as an indemnified person and that he be indemnified in accordance with the Board of Trustees' indemnification resolution.
Bowing recommendation of General Counsel. Is there a motion for approval? First and second. Are there any final comments? All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Our third item is proposed trustee code of conduct. Tony, please.
Thank you. Currently, there is no Board of Trustees' Code of Conduct in place. Instead, Article 9, Section A of the bylaws references a code of ethics and conflict of interest and states that the members of the Board of Trustees shall be guided by the provisions set forth in the Indiana Code and the university's Principles on Ethical Conduct. Neither the Code nor the Principles sufficiently address the heightened fiduciary responsibilities of trustees. Additionally, the university's Principles of Ethical Conduct do not include any procedures for handling violations of those principles. The majority of our Big Ten peer institutions have trustee code of conduct or a trustee code of ethics. We have drafted a code of conduct for Indiana University trustees that addresses, among other things, the fiduciary responsibilities of trustees and a sanctions process for addressing potential or actual violations of the code of conduct. If the Board of Trustees approves the adoption of the code of conduct, it will replace Section A in Article 9 of the bylaws, and it is my recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the adoption of that code of conduct.
Trustees, do we have any further questions, comments? I was going to get to that. I, I can look here anyway. Approval for the requested adoption of the Board of Trustees' Code of Conduct to be further reviewed by the Board. Is there a motion for approval? So moved in second. Are there any further comments? Got the floor.
Thank you. This is one of the things I really carefully thought about and looked into. Number one, IU needs a, a Board of, uh, needs a code of conduct for trustees. There's no, no question about it. And there are key elements to that that are, you know, fairly recognized throughout the various university codes of conduct that I examined, and they have, and of course, one of them we, we've already mentioned is, is conflict of interest, but there are others, you know. The, the fact that executive sessions, you know, you shouldn't, it would be a violation of the code of conduct to discuss what happened in an executive session, for instance. Support for board resolutions that have been adopted. You know, you're, you would have an obligation to, you know, do, do everything you can do to support those, those, those motions. So there are a number of these things, and what you see typically is, for instance, what Indiana, I'm sorry, what Purdue has, and I'll be pass out their code of conduct. And, oh, yeah, okay.
Can you get that and make sure to get to work, please? Thank you.
And let me say something for a minute about, about Purdue University. There are few people in this, in the history of the state of Indiana I respect more, there's few that I respect more than Mitch Daniels. I was General Counsel to both, both of his campaigns, very close to him as governor, and then, of course, his stellar career at Purdue University. His contributions are unparalleled, in my opinion, and they're reflected by Purdue's success, which is, which I herald. There, there's two ways of approaching this. One is bright, bright-line rules, and that's what Purdue has. And, and the other way of approaching it is what has been proposed, which has a lot of explanations, aspirational provisions, all of which can be enforced by ultimately trustee being sanctioned or removed. So now, what's the matter with aspirational, all right? A lot of aspirational that can be enforced in the way that I just described. Well, there's several. One is the issue of vagueness. It's called unconstitutional vagueness. In other words, words that are being used that you really can't ascertain exactly, you know, what, what's the conduct you're supposed to engage in. The second is, to the extent that it impinges on the First Amendment right of trustees to be able to speak, and there, there's no doubt we have that, all right? And the other is understanding the fiduciary relationships that you have. And, you know, that, that's worth an hour or two discussion, in my opinion, because it's pretty profound and something, I mean, I've represented organizations for, you know, 50 years, so this is something that, you know, I'm really, you know, interested in, concerned about, and want to see fulfilled, all right? Now, the second part is vetting, all right? And unless there's an emergency, I really believe that we need a process where, and, and now we, of course, we, I assume this is public now, is it?
The proposed? I beg your pardon?
Is the proposed trustee code of conduct public? All right.
It is not.
And I see at the top of confidential and privileged. Can I, can I talk about what's in here?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Okay, good. My preference, unless there's an emergency, is publicly disclosing things that we are to be, to consider, whatever they may be, all right? They may be policies, they may be approvals of, you know, easements, whatever the case may be, and, and then have a process for the committees to examine them and recommend to the Board what happened, what should happen. This, this proposed policy suffers from that lack as well, vetting, all right? And it, it just has profound implications. So my, my view is we should refer this to a committee for, to gain comments from everyone, because it should be made public so that the people can comment on it, and refer to committee to then recommend to the Board, you know, what, what should be adopted. And I think, you know, my preference is that that become standard operating procedure, right? So I, so I, I don't want to get into the details of the problems I have with this. I'd much rather we submit this to a process without adopting it. We've not, we haven't had a code of conduct since 1820. I don't see an emergency that would mean we can't wait two or three months to adopt a, a policy. And I just have very serious concerns about what has been proposed, right? And I would like to see it vetted. So I move that the proposed code of conduct be referred to a committee appointed, of course, under our rules, as I understand it, by the Chairman for review and reporting back at the next board meeting.
Here's my, you could help me, because we just had it, the motion.
There's a motion pending that has been first and second, correct?
First and second.
This takes priority. It's a motion to refer to committee, which can be applied to a main motion. I mean, that's the whole point of the motion. It, it takes priority over the main motion as far as consideration by the body.
I actually, I mean, I think under Sturgis, that it's, it's last motion gets addressed first. You go, it's weird, it's odd to me, but under Sturgis Board of Governor, it's so, it is strange, but if you study it, there's the first motion, here's the second motion, you have to address the second motion first.
Well, it, okay, well, all right. Now, I, I, I will admit
Okay.
That I've been practicing parliamentary procedure for 60 years, and I have never heard of Sturgis. So when I looked at the Board of the bylaws, and I found that, okay? I checked out Wikipedia, and you always got to believe what they say, right? What, what is Sturgis, right? And they said, and they said that that is the second-most utilized parliamentary procedure in the United States. But that means that it is so far second that I had never even heard of it, all right? So it...
I'm looking for counsel to, to help me here.
Somebody, if, if they, if they say
I agree with you.
You, you have to defeat the adoption of the policy in order to refer it to committee, right?
I don't think that's what they said.
No? Okay, then how's it work?
My understanding.
I agree with, I agree with trustee more, what you just explained, yes. We have to address
What does that mean?
That we have to address your motion.
If you have to address the last
The last motion.
So the first motion was the motion to approve the policy. You've now made a motion that basically says you would like to refer it to committee.
Right.
Procedure, with, under Sturgis, would be that we have to vote on yours first.
Oh, well, that's what I would think.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Jim, before we vote on that, may I ask a question? Your comment about having, I, I don't want to put where, I can't remember if it's issues or concerns or whatever about the, is it that there's things in there that aren't correct and would be a problem if we implemented it, or is it that it's not written in as clear and crisp a way as you would like? I'm just trying to understand what, what the concerns at a high level are.
I would agree with both of those. Both, I think they, it suffers from both, and, you know, and I've annotated my copy, and I put a V where we have what I consider an unconstitutionally vague provision. For instance, that we are obligated, I should get that exact language, it's really interesting. Yes. All trustees shall comply and conduct themselves in accordance with the spirit and letter of all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. I understand what the letter is, all right? I mean, I, I practice law, that's what we do. What in the world is the spirit? Now, if it's the Holy Spirit, okay, I know where to go to, to find out what the Holy Spirit wants us to do, okay? But the spirit of a law, that's an absurdity, honestly.
Okay, that, that's helpful. I was just, thank you.
You know...
So here, guys, you know, this is, this is very important stuff, but we've got to deal with it in a sequence based, I, I'm tending to, I'm taking counsel, so we got to deal with yours first.
Right, right.
Okay?
I understand, and that's right.
And look, if, if I may, Chairman, so we've got three new trustees that have been on for seven days, and we've got three new trustees coming on July 1. So I think the, the, the desire to have it go to a committee of trustees and, and formulate the right recommendation is the right, is, I think that's a, I think it's a great step, and we should definitely do that. We're going to have six new trustees in a matter of 20 days. So let's, let's definitely, I would, let me do that. I guess my only question would be, is there anything wrong with adopting this? So we have something, because we've got three new trustees, we don't know who they are, that are coming, so we would have a code of conduct, and that code of conduct would be adjusted within 90 days. I mean, do you, do you feel that that 90-day period is, is not something that we could live with? I'd prefer to have, I'd prefer to have the code of conduct, and you said it's important, we should have one. It's not perfect. It's going to be, it's going to be referred to committee, but I'd prefer to refer it to committee. to refer it to committee. But I would also prefer to accept it.
What is the, what is the hurry for the, that we can't wait, after 200 years, we can't wait two more months?
For the 200 years, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna object to that because I don't think that makes a lot of sense. But, but I think the issue was that we, we just got some people that are going to come on here very shortly, so that, that, to me, is so you have something in place when they come in, and then it's reviewed, and you can fine tune it after that.
Well, it, it, I take laws really seriously.
As we all do.
Okay? I know you do. And I take the First Amendment very seriously, and I take fiduciary responsibilities very seriously. And when you, when, and, and there would be nothing more damaging to this Board than a complaint by someone against another over whether or not he obeys the spirit of the law, all right? You know, and so it's important that we get it right at the first time, at the beginning, not, not revise it at the end, all right? It's important we get it right first, and there's no reason not to wait, or we could, should adopt Purdue's.
I'm sorry?
We should adopt Purdue's.
So the question on the table, given the, the rules here are, Jim has put a motion on the table, right? Or you did, correct?
I did move to refer it to committee.
I'm sorry?
I did, yes, I, I moved to refer it to committee.
And the question is?
I think, look, I think that's, I think it should be to committee, I do, I agree.
So
You're seconding it?
I'm happy to second it.
So he's, there's now a second to that motion, and
And it goes to committee, I, I'm, yeah.
I'm, right, I mean, that's, that's what he's, that's what they're saying.
And we come, we come back in September and look at it again.
Yeah. So the question is, is a motion and a second.
Just for, for clarification purposes, we are sending this to the committee, but we are not approving this current one, right?
That's correct.
That is what, what we are, you know.
Yes.
I think Tim sees it differently. There's two separate decisions. One is
We have two motions.
Now, hold on. The, the one, the motion he has is, is, is it goes to committee, so there is none effectively until it gets to committee. That's what, what Jim's saying.
Right. That's the effect.
Yeah, that's the net effect of it.
It, it is that this, this goes to committee, so it's no longer on the table.
Okay, so the motion is actually, it goes to committee and it's off, it did, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's the effect of the motion. Yeah.
So is the, the motion has
Yeah.
Has been seconded? All approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
All right, that's what you got?
Well, thank you.
Oh, yes. All right, what do we have after that? Approval for the revisions of the Board trustee bylaws, is that you?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir, please.
That's my last issue. Earlier today, you, we talked about the changes that were required by House Enrolled Act 101. Article 3 of the trustee bylaws addresses the election and appointment of trustees, and Article 4 addresses the appointment of the student trustee. As a result of the enactment of House Enrolled Act 1001, Indiana University no longer has a trustee elected by the alumni of Indiana University, and instead, the governor now appoints all nine members of the Board of Trustees. Additionally, the House Enrolled Act changed the term of the student trustee from two years to one year. Articles 3 and Article 4 have been revised to comply with House Enrolled Act 1001. And it is my recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve those required changes to Articles 3 and Articles 4 of the trustee bylaws.
Recommendation from the counsel, is there motion for approval? I heard a person, and I believe I heard a second, are there any other comments?
And, and we, and we've been advised by the Secretary that this was 14 days ago was
Right. Right into board members.
Somewhere, I didn't
You existed, okay. 14 days ago, all right? So that's good.
I think in all fairness, 14 days ago, a lot of this has come pretty quickly, but we, we met the criteria, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Motion is, motion's carried. Are there any other questions, by the way? We met the 14 days, anything else? All right, the final item regards, I'm sorry, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries, all.
Thank you.
Final item. Thanks, Tony. Regards Presidential Compensation, I turn this over to the Compensation Committee Chair, Trustee Langham for the report.
Okay, thank you, Chair Buckner. Thank you, members of the Compensation Committee, Isaac and Tim, appreciate all your help. This is not about changing the president's compensation plan. Those who paid attention probably know we did that at the last meeting. We, we changed our compensation and extended the contract. This is just about the bonus payout. So according to the president's contract, we can pay up to 25% of her base salary as a bonus at the end of the year, so that's what we're doing today. President Witten is eligible to receive 25% of her salary. This year, we recommend that President Witten receives a bonus at the full rate of the eligible sum. This recommendation, and we spent a lot of time on this today, is based on President Witten meeting goals and key performance indicators in the last year. So at a high level, the five overarching goals for her were, number one, successfully hiring Chancellor, Chancellor Reingold for the Bloomington campus, and distinguished Rudy Professor of Music Mariotta Simpson as a fellow, faculty fellow, that was one. Two, collaborating with the faculty and trustees to ensure we are following new and upcoming laws enacted by the General Assembly and signed by the governor, two. Ensuring a successful first year of operations for IU Indianapolis, including the incredible achievement of R1 status and the groundbreaking for the James T. Morris Arena and dedication of the School of Medicine's new medical education research building. Knocked it out of the park. Number four, building on the next stage of innovate IU to a solid position, to position IU as a university steeped in a culture of entrepreneurship. Absolutely. And the fifth one, launching preparations for the next capital campaign, to name a few. Just, just a few of her accomplishments, tons more. She talked about them, I think everyone's talked about them. So by these measures, we concur, it's been a successful year with notable accomplishments and a clear path to future progress and success. Any questions, trustees?
No, I would just, I would just also say that the Compensation Committee also looks, and when we look and think about compensation, we think about it as a total reward package, and this bonus and how our president is benchmarked against the other Big Ten, the 18 universities in the Big Ten, we think it's, it's appropriate and, and a unanimous recommendation from the Compensation Committee.
Yes, okay. Well, with that said, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this bonus. He, he bounced it to me.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, we, we have a motion, we have a second, any other comments or questions?
I've just got a comment. I, you know, I wanted to be known that I support the president's leadership, I voted yes on the contract extension. As we've seen today, though, we're, you know, facing significant financial challenges, and we've reduced benefits for employees, we're asking others to make cuts across the institution, and so that's where I struggle with this proposal, so for that reason, I'll be voting no.
Okay. So with that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No, so, motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Before you give that back, I'm going to, you got it. This is, this is
Okay, this is it, guys, this is my last meeting, my last comments. I, I would just say, it's been an honor and a privilege to be on this Board of Trustees over the last three years. I think we have tackled a lot of big, important issues and opportunities. We've made thoughtful progress on many of them, and I, I commend these trustees and the leadership team and the Faculty Council and everyone involved in all these changes. We've made a ton of progress and we've moved forward, and I'm very proud of that. Fellow trustees, thank you. Thanks for the trust and the camaraderie. You know, I've been on many public and private boards in my day, and the one comment I'll make is, they are all very different. It's all, very different, first of all. Second of all, I, I think this one's the most different. I have experienced, in terms of people so, with divergent thoughts and about the way an organization should be run or anything, I mean, it just, it just felt like it was, you know, quite a battle, and, and I, I say that respectfully, but what I loved most about it was the passion. I mean, this passion for IU and this passion for doing the right thing for the university, there was never a doubt, and I haven't really felt that before on another board. I mean, you have passion, but nothing, you know, nothing like this group has, past, current, and the future trustees. Congrats. It's, it's gonna be fun, probably the only coaching, I, I could give you a lot of coaching, feel free to call anytime, but it's, it's more time than you think it'll be. And as with, with all boards, you know, you get a lot more than you give, so I look forward to seeing how you're gonna contribute and grow this organization over the next period of time. And Pam Witten, oh my gosh, your energy, your, your speed, your cadence, I've never met anything. I, I thought I was good until I, I mean, the way you get things done and how, how much you care about this university and the students is unparalleled. And I have learned so much, especially about grace under pressure. I mean, it, it's, we have had more pressure over the last few years on this Board, and you have stayed steady. You've never lost your temper, you've, you know, just moved it forward, and you are such a gift to me personally, as, as well as the organization, so thank you for that. I'll miss y'all, and I'll be watching, so, you know, you're gonna do great things, thank you.
Can I jump in? So I want to say, Kathy and I have been dear friends for years, and you can see why. And you just literally said everything I would have loved to have said, but I'm so glad you said it, because I, ditto, 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 and Pam, just 100 times, just been awesome working with you. You are a force. It's awesome to see that force. It's great to have been with all of you. I love IU. I think back to all my years, I had been involved at IU from the day I graduated, from the day. I mean, I did recruiting, I presented to classes, I was on all kinds of boards, a gazillion boards, I was on, you know, the Dean's Council, blah, blah, whatever all it was. And this was kind of, in a way, I'm, I'm hoping that we can find the next thing, that we can continue to be a part of this great university, because I absolutely love it, and it's been an honor, as you said, and a privilege.
Some really caring souls that are gonna be leaving us. But our next meeting is gonna be September 11th. I want to again thank the new trustees, looking forward to that. Thanks to everyone for your service, and to everyone attending today. Have a great evening. We adjourn.